...that's been I'm trying to do to the point where it moved and I can't remember how. It's been so long. Okay, never mind. It was just a surprise.
I can see her.
Great. Welcome everyone to the Town Hall Norfolk Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, May 20th, '25. It is 7:00 PM. We are gathered here in Town Hall Meeting Room 124. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General law, Chapter 38, Section 20, notice was previously given that the planning board will meet this evening here in Town Hall. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in person or by remote Zoom connection provided. Please note that the in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the remote connection. So we have opened our regular meeting. I would now, we will do a roll call of our kind of, of our board members here this evening. So we have, we'll just go around the room. So we've got Gary Searle, our associate member. We have our newest member, Dan Seager. Welcome, Dan.
Thank you.
Then we have Chris Motford here.
Hello.
Myself, Chad Peck, Gary Sullivan, Melissa Mayo. We have our town planner, Rich McCarthy, and our admin, Betsy Fajol. So we, I would like to now take a vote to enter our executive session. So can I do?
Motion to enter the executive session.
I would just state the name of the case. Just get from the...
Okay. So I'd like to, I'd like to entertain a motion to enter an executive session under our Mass General law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation entitled Wall Street Development Court versus Planning Board at all Norfolk Superior Court Civil Action Number 1882 CV01140.
Second. So moved.
Sorry. The chair should just declare that a discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body. So if you agree with that, just make that declaration and...
Yep, I do agree with that. So we'd like to make a declaration that the, that discussion in our open meeting would be detrimental. So that's why we are opening this executive session.
So moved.
Can I, we do not need to do a roll call vote since we're all here in person. Do we do? We do? I'm sorry. So we will do a roll call vote. We'll just go around the room. Dan?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
The chair votes aye and your...
And I would if I could.
Your opinion? Yes. All right. So we now are...
Zoning Bylaws Section 310-6.11. A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, May 20, 2025, at 7:45 PM, in Room 124 at the Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass., regarding a site plan application and stormwater management for property located at 28 Medway Branch Road in Norfolk, Massachusetts. The applicant, the Norfolk Council on Aging of Norfolk, is proposing construction of a new pavilion and reconstruction of the parking lot. The property is located in the R1 zoning district, reference Assessor's Map 15, Block 32, lots 27 and 28. The application plans are available for public inspection on the town and Norfolk website.
All right, so before we go into this, there's quite a lot of us, and I'm sure we're gonna have a lot of public comments. When it comes to that point, the ask is going to be, one, you remain civil. Two, you do not repeat comments that have already been stated by others. Three, that we keep to three minutes. That way, everybody who wants to speak can speak, has an opportunity to do so. We have comments that are kind of come from the board first, and then we're gonna go out to the public, and we're gonna flip between Zoom and in person. If you are in person, you will have a microphone, you will speak into that microphone, you will start by stating your name and your location, and the same request for Zoom. And then, if we ask you to stop talking at that point, we will ask, we will expect you to do so. And then we're gonna keep this nice, orderly, and succinct, and hopefully, we'll all get out of here at some point tonight. Sounds good? All right, Rich, we've got a couple of comments from Town Council with regards to this. Do you want to read us into that?
Yeah, so I, first of all, I'd introduce Tony Riley from Harry Tony, Heat Law Office. I know those questions that were presented to the board relative to the prior approvals for the senior center that were back in 1999, 2000. So I thought that I'd have Tony address those upfront before we get into the merits of the project, so that way you can proceed with that, so.
Sure. What are the specific questions?
Well, in terms of the legacy of the special permit from 1999, and the fact that the Council on Aging can come before the board presently to proceed with this project, it's not being barred by the previous decisions that were made by the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Right. All right, so I'll give a quick overview. If you have questions, you can ask, or I can wait till later to see how the discussion goes. But generally, this property was subject to an appeal 24 years ago when it was first permitted. The town and a group of neighbors signed a settlement agreement, and my read of the settlement agreement is that the town had to do six things to comply, you know, namely, design the project a certain way, construct it a certain way, keep to certain hours, something with lights, lighting hours. And I guess from my view, that the town complied with it, and that's why the senior center is there today. Nowhere in that agreement does it say that the town cannot seek an amendment to the site plan to fix the parking lot or add an accessory structure like they're seeking to do now. And nowhere in the agreement does it say that it is somehow binding on the
Okay, we are back in our regular open meeting. We do have about six minutes before we can actually open the public hearing for Medway Branch. So we're gonna do, we're gonna go a little bit out of order, jump ahead to some of our new business items, just to get them off the list. We just legally can't open early the public hearing, in case there's anybody else wants to come into the room or join us on Zoom. So...
You want to do the reorg first? Let's go down this.
Okay. So we, every year, so let's do our board reorganization. So every year, we do have new members come and go on the board, and we do a vote for three positions, our Chair, Vice Chair, and Clerk. And so I also just wanted to let, I think, I know I've talked to all of you, but I just wanted to mention it again, that I will be moving out of state in July, so I will not be holding any positions on the board. And my last meeting will be in June. So we typically do, Rich, do we typically do it Clerk and up, or do we do Chair down? Do we do top down or bottom up?
I nominate Chris Monford for Chair.
There we go.
There we go.
Just starting right off the bat.
Yep.
Okay. I would second that.
There you go, you start at the top and go down.
There you go.
I accept your nominations.
Any other nominations for Chair? Okay. Well, we will do a vote. Rich, do we need to do a roll call vote for this, or?
No.
No, okay. So all those in favor of Chris Monford as our Chair, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so, our new Chair.
Hi.
All right. I know that's why you're all here, so thank you. I really appreciate it. All right, looking to take nominations for Vice Chair.
I nominate Gary Sullivan for Vice Chair.
I second that.
Can I be Vice Chair and CPC rep, or should I hand off CPC rep? Because I find that very valuable.
Thank you.
Very forced.
I don't see why you cannot serve CPC rep.
No, you can serve CPC.
If you would like.
CPC.
Unless you want to give it up.
I mean, if somebody wants CPC, I'll clearly, you know, I'll gladly give it up.
I don't think anybody's probably going to fight you for it.
That's actually the best part about being on Planning Board, is having a seat at CPC.
It's a very good place.
It's rewarding. I'm just saying, if anybody wants to think forward, I'll accept the nomination.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Seeking nomination for the Clerk position.
It was a little bit traditional in this position.
There is, and I'm waiting to hear it.
Usually the new member takes the Clerk position. It's a good way to get your feet wet. So I'd like to nominate Dan Seeger as our Clerk.
Accept the nomination.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations.
Thanks.
Another point of order, I just want to thank Chad for all of his time on the board. It's been how many years?
Six, seven?
Seven.
I don't know, something, it's been a while.
It's been a while. In that, you've made some significant contributions, so just want to send heartfelt thank you and wish you all the best in the future.
I know, we will miss you.
We'll do this again in a couple meetings. All right.
And CPC.
And, yes.
Does anybody want the CPC representative seat for Planning Board? It is actually a lot of fun. Very interesting.
Community preservation, that sounds very Dan Seeger-ish.
Yeah, I'd be interested.
Yeah.
Okay. If you want it, you got it.
That next meeting.
Next meeting?
Yep.
Why is that on?
I did not put it on the table.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry.
Well, let me show you your new job, because you're about to announce. We haven't told you what it is yet, but here you go. So.
Do you want to cut his teeth on the meeting minutes?
We can't open it yet, though.
Oh, no.
Yeah, let's cut.
Don't do it yet.
We're gonna cut your teeth on the meeting minutes, so what you're gonna do is you're gonna motion to review and approve the meeting minutes from the 4/8/25 meeting.
Hold on.
You can't vote on them.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I can't vote on it, right?
You can't vote on it, I can't vote on it.
Yeah.
But he can make the motion.
The three of us.
Yes.
This cable got above five. They're stressing that cable.
Oh, yeah. All right, so Mr. Clerk?
So motion to approve the minutes from April 8th, 2025. April 8th, 2025, Planning Board meeting.
Second?
Second, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, thank you. All right, with that, we've got about roughly 30 seconds. How's your day, Chad?
It's been a busy one, how about yours?
It's been insanely busy, I can't even tell you. I'm just, I'm counting the seconds, literally.
Meeting after meeting?
Meeting after meeting, all day long.
All on video, right?
Oh, God, yes. It's been insane. All right, with that, Mr. Clerk, please read us in for our 7:45 public hearing.
Wait, so where do I start, at the time?
Notice, where it says notice.
Oh, notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass. General Law, Section 40A, and the Norfolk Zoning Bylaws, Section 310-6.11. A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, May 20th, 2025, at 7:45 PM in Room 124 at the Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass., regarding a site plan application and stormwater management for property located at 28 Medway Branch Road in Norfolk, Massachusetts. The applicant, the Norfolk Council on Aging of Norfolk, is proposing construction of a new pavilion and reconstruction of the parking lot. The property is located in the R1 zoning district, reference Assessor's Map 15, Block 32, lots 27 and 28. The application plans are available for public inspection on the town and Norfolk website.
All right, so before we go into this, there's quite a lot of us, and I'm sure we're gonna have a lot of public comments. When it comes to that point, the ask is going to be, one, you remain civil, two, you do not repeat comments that have already been stated by others, three, that we keep to three minutes, so that way everybody who wants to speak can speak, has an opportunity to do so. We have comments that are kind of come from the board first, and then we're gonna go out to the public, and we're gonna flip between Zoom and in person. If you are in person, you will have a microphone, you will speak into that microphone, you will start by stating your name and your location, and the same request for Zoom, and then if we ask you to stop talking at that point, we will ask, we will expect you to do so. And then we're gonna keep this nice, orderly, and succinct, and hopefully we'll all get out of here at some point tonight. Sounds good? All right, Rich, we've got a couple comments from Town Council with regards to this. Do you want to read us into that?
Yeah, so first of all, I'd introduce Tony Riley from Harry Tony, Heat Law Office. I know those questions that were presented to the board relative to the prior approvals for the senior center that were back in 1999, 2000. So I thought that I'd have Tony address those upfront before we get into the merits of the project, so that way you can proceed with that, so.
Sure. What are the specific questions?
Well, in terms of the legacy of the special permit from 1999, and the fact that the Council on Aging can come before the board presently to proceed with this project, it's not being barred by the previous decisions that were made by the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals.
All right, so I'll give a quick overview, if you have questions, you can ask, or I can wait till later to see how the discussion goes. But generally, this property was subject to an appeal 24 years ago when it was first permitted. The town and a group of neighbors signed a settlement agreement, and my read of the settlement agreement is that the town had to do six things to comply, you know, namely, design the project a certain way, construct it a certain way, keep to certain hours, something with lights, lighting hours. And I guess from my view, that the town complied with it, and that's why the senior center is there today. Nowhere in that agreement does it say that the town cannot seek an amendment to the site plan to fix the parking lot, or add an accessory structure like they're seeking to do now. And nowhere in the agreement does it say that it is somehow binding on the town until all the original signatories, you know, move out of their houses. So my view is that you just treat this as if it's a regular application for an amended site plan for the things that they're proposing, and, you know, whatever, obviously, whatever questions you have, and the discussion that comes after is all relevant, but there's nothing that's happened in the past that bars the board's consideration of this application.
All right.
I'll add, sorry, I'll add that I'm pretty sure not everyone in the room agrees with that, and once we get to that part of it, I'm happy to jump back in, and we can talk about things, you know, invent more specifics, but that's just my general overview of the situation.
Perfect. And then, Rich, if you could just give us a summary of how we are, how did we get to where we are today?
Sure. So how this started goes back right at the beginning of COVID, in terms, I'll speak to relative to the pavilion aspect of the project than move over to the parking lot. There was a desire to provide some outdoor open space for programming back in 2020. Obviously, we're now at 2025, but to have a covered space for outdoor program, maybe for guest speakers, gatherings for the seniors, lectures, et cetera, even maybe some outdoor exercise, because it will be covered space that would be shaded, so allow for some additional outdoor programming space for the senior center. So that was the genesis back in 2020. The Council on Aging Director, who's along with us, went before the Community Preservation Committee to seek funding for that pavilion. They did agree to fund the pavilion, but in order to fund that, to know how to proceed with the pavilion, it would require modification to the site plan approval for the Council on Aging site. And as we got the discussion back then in terms of the pavilion, then came up the discussion about the parking lot itself, in terms of it's, how it's laid out today currently. It's not most advantageous for people who are the principal users that may have mobility issues in terms of, it complies with the required number of handicap parking spaces under the law, but from a user standpoint, it would benefit by having additional handicap spots available to seniors that are using the space. And then, in addition to that, would be the ability to have more accessible or closer proximity parking spaces to the center main entryway as a whole, and maybe somebody who's not necessarily, you know, would qualify as a handicap placard, but have a closer proximity for parking near the center. In addition to that, as you come in now, you have to funnel through right by the entryway into the senior center. So from a traffic circulation standpoint, it's really not as advantageous to do that. So if you don't need handicap parking space, you're really forcing everything by the entryway. The thought was to provide an in and out to the primary, the larger parking area, without having to go in front of the center itself. So that was one of the things to be considered, as well as better linear sidewalks to be able to go from the parking to the main center. And I know we'll talk about a little bit later, but there was some gravel that was removed 2016 timeframe, and you'll see as we get into this, there's some parking that's there happening today, which is on the gravel surface, which is not, again, not most advantageous for a parking service, to serve parking for any user, actually, but more importantly, I think, certainly for the seniors to be able to do that. And we have some photos that we'll share just in a moment, that shows that we're from today, in terms of parking on site. So those were some of the points. The lighting, and I know we'll certainly touch on lighting in terms of lighting, lighting technology today is vastly different than it was in 1999, to be able to provide adequate lighting, but also then also be able to shield it as well. So that's dramatically different today than it was back then, at minimum. So, again, provide better parking, more parking, and to really allow for a fuller use of that facility that's there for the seniors that are there. Those are the reasonings why it's here tonight before you. We went through nine different versions of this site layout, in terms of how to arrange things, and we finally, if you remember, we came before the board last fall just to show this version, to get some feedback on it. So now, this version has advanced to the point of being ready to be able to be permitted, which includes the pavilion as well, so. Is that TV?
I'd say it's a beautiful senior center.
Basically gorgeous, gorgeous senior.
And so, just for everyone's benefit, from a approval perspective, can you just explain to them where we are with regards to this project?
So with this project, it's zero, night one, essentially. You know, this is the public hearing process, testimony to be taken, going through the issues that may come up to the permitting process, through this process. I think what's important to note, as we kind of get into the discussion, which is interesting, is that when the senior center was originally permitted in 1999, it was a use that was by special permit. I do want to note, interesting enough, I wasn't around back then, but latter part of 1999, it became a by right use. So as it sits today, it's a by right use in town Norfolk, it's not a special permit used. But that's where we're at. We have the project proponent engineer is here. We have the peer review consultant, the third-party review on behalf of the Planning Board, who reviews the projects in relation to the bylaw and the regulations. He is joining us via Zoom. And then one of the project team's engineers is also here. So Rick Gudrow is here, on behalf of United Consultants, who's a design firm for the senior center. And then Stephen Lee is, should be on Zoom.
Yep. See you, Stephen, thank you for joining.
So I think I would turn it over to Rick.
Sure.
Well, actually, my apologies, let me try to get the photos up of the parking lot. Karen Edwards is here, the Council on Aging Director. She's in the back. Yeah, I'd like to actually have you move to the table, that would be easier, right? Because you would have the...
Or she, okay.
Right? Oh, you want over there? She can sit over there with a mic, yeah, if you want, that's good, but.
Well, I don't have anything to display right now, so. Having some technical issues.
So I'm gonna...
Do you, can you, are you on Zoom?
No, I'm not on Zoom. I was just gonna, I mean, I suppose I can go on Zoom if that helps. Do I need to go on Zoom?
No, I think I can.
I'm gonna try that. Just when you think you have all the technology.
No. Hold on. Okay. I can, I can share it on...
Is that, is that moving on the?
I'm starting to think you all weren't here just for the board reorganization.
Congratulations.
You have pictures of the parking lot today?
We have those, it's just sending it to the screens.
We wanted, I do have them, but I wanted to be able to share with everyone, so that was the...
What would you like, Rich? I can put it up on...
The Tower Point says photos of the parking lot.
Okay.
I was trying to do a smart view. I can show you the pictures that I took today.
Oh, he's trying to share with the TV over my phone.
Is that you?
So it's...
I don't know that we have the remote.
Pictures are on Zoom, not on...
Yeah, so right in front of us.
But they're on these two TVs, right, Betsy?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
I just need to move a little to...
Okay.
So, Rich, do you want to talk through this, or do you want Rick to go?
The objective was to have Karen talk through it as the director.
Awesome.
Why don't you sit by seat, and we have the mic.
All right. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of a visual focus of just a couple of pictures that we've taken of the parking lot prior to today. And so this will show you in the winter, we have less space than we even have during the summer. The gravel area can get covered in ice, and it was covered in ice, and people are currently parking back there because they have to, but in the winter, they've also plowed out of there, because the DPW had to plow the lot itself, the other lot. So they weren't able to get back there in the winter, and I didn't really want them back there in the winter anyway, if you can see the footing there, if you've got a cane or a walker that you need to navigate with. Can you forward that?
Sure.
There's some more pictures of parking in the winter. In that case, you're seeing some cars that are parked in the gravel area in the winter, and I think the other ones on the left may be on the actual parking area itself.
On average, how many cars do you have parked during an event?
Well, it depends on the event. I was looking at some figures a little earlier today, and the most recent one I can speak to is that we had basically a Jimmy Buffett Tribute Act that was there, and there was some lunch and things like that. And I can tell you that the check-ins for the day were 136 at that point. And when we have lunches on Wednesdays, many, the friends put on the friends' lunches, and many of the lunches are very popular, and they go up to 60 just for the lunch there. And we also have other programs that go on at the same time, either it's fitness classes or board games, Mahjong Bridge, things like that. So this is a particularly interesting picture of someone who decided there was nowhere to park, so why not there? In the circle behind the cars are actually parked in that front area. So that happens occasionally.
Just want to say, it's nice that you have a big screen.
Can you, microphone?
It's very hard for us to see on this little screen back here. It's nice that you have a big one, but we can't really see it very well.
Normally, I would display it up there, but for whatever reason, the remote is not working, so.
Should I continue?
Continue.
This is, these are just pictures of the lot condition in general. I don't know whether anything's been done to it since when it was first, when the building was first built, but you'll see there's lots of cracks in it, and there's spots where there's dips, where it looks like the ground sunk, and then, I don't know how that works, but it dips down. So the condition of the regular lot on its own is not really good for, again, people with walkers and canes and things like that, it's an uneven surface.
Want to scroll down? Betsy?
Yes.
This is just another picture of the parking lot near the front door, the crosswalk there. And on the picture on the right is a picture of people that just park in the fire lane, because either there's no other spots in the gravel area, or in the front, or some people with mobility issues do end up parking there, so they can get closer to the door.
Continuing on?
Sorry about that.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you. TV just doesn't want to work. I don't know, we didn't have these problems before.
I know, right?
Chad was in charge.
I mean, geez, Rich.
I didn't do that.
Yeah.
No, I think the remote works.
No, that's LG, and that's Vizio. But I have that issue in my house.
Why is this different now? I'm sorry.
Two Samsung TVs in the same area that...
Apologies to all those online and in person, as we work through a couple technical difficulties. Andrew, we lost the front TV, can you help with that?
Oh, my gosh.
We're gonna go back to handouts.
Yeah?
Oh, yeah.
Nobody touch any light switches? Nothing. It's because somebody touched the thermostat, I know it.
That's right, we turned the fan on.
I have a tendency to that.
Where did we?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Oh, did Rich, oh, did that?
Andrew, I don't know if there's anything you can do about that one. Yeah, no, that one's not. Okay. No worry.
Yeah, I'm not sure what's up, I'm trying to like multitask Karen.
Don't worry about that one.
Yeah, just drive it off of the Zoom.
I do have a paper copy of the plans, I can put on an easel if...
Do you have an easel?
Yes.
Want to grab that real quick?
That would be, yeah.
Yep.
So as far as the photos go, and as we were going through it, looking at that slide deck, it looks like the pictures continue to just tell a story about how, you know, there's a lot of disrepair, there's a lot of congestion, and really pleading the case for the work to be done in the parking lot.
Yes, and I think one of the, it may only be one picture left that we didn't get a chance to see, but that is actually a gentleman with mobility issues that had to park in that fire lane, and I just took a picture of him with his cane, having to walk from there to get into the building, which explains why he parked in the fire lane. But I think that you pretty much...
And adding additional handicap parking above the limit, just, I mean, it's justified.
It makes sense for a senior center, yeah.
There's a use case for it, yeah.
Was the pavilion in the back of the building, the back of the parking lot?
What about the pavilion?
I was just trying to recall where the location of it was.
Well, it isn't, there isn't one built right now, but it would be, how do I just spread it? If you went back left, if you were facing the building, and then you went to the left of the building, there's a grassy area back there, it would be located somewhere in there.
All right. And the gravel parking lot is the current, is that behind the existing parking lot?
Yes, so we have the two rows of existing parking that are paved.
Yes.
And then one of them is facing a larger gravel area, so people drive over the ends of the parking lot, there's kind of a berm there.
Okay.
And sometimes, that's trouble too, because those, the ground, I'm trying to figure how to say it, the ground on either side of the berm can sometimes dip out a little, so people can bottom out in that.
Oh.
The DPW has fixed it a couple of times for us, but that's also a problem when that happens, because there's no clear way to get in there, except to go over the berm right now.
All right, so Mr. Gudrow, when you're all set there, you can go through the drawings. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's your arms on the TV?
I have them in front of me, Chad's got them, you guys have access to it. Are you in the drive? Gary, are you?
Betsy, can you put them up on Zoom?
You have them in the drive folder if you need them?
Yeah, I do.
All right, so as far as we are good?
You are?
Yep, just let us know what page you're on, and we'll move with you.
Just for introductions, Rick Gudrow here, Carlos Quintel from the Office, United Consultants, is on Zoom. The first page we have is a cover page, shows the existing site locus hatched out in the right-hand corner of the site map. And one of the portions of this proposal would be to add some additional land to the north and east of the existing site to increase the size of the property. That area is also shown as hatched. I would expect that everyone's familiar with the location of this on Midway Branch, just to the east of the Bonstable Road intersection and to the west of the Tucker Road intersection.
And for everyone's benefit, that portion that you're looking to add to that property is owned by the town currently.
That's correct.
Yes. We're going to refrain from questions during the presentation, we'll open up the questions for everyone in person later.
And sheet one of nine is the existing conditions plan, and that shows what's currently at the site. Site driveway coming in in this location here. It's, it's here. Turn off the volume. They turned mine off. Get things thrown in, you know?
It's Rich doing his Ziggy Stardust impression.
I think we have bingo.
All right, so we're back. So as I was saying, drive, existing driveway entrance is currently located here, building's located in this area here. As Rich had mentioned previously, the circulation pattern is such that vehicles come up here. There are six parking spaces located, excuse me, five parking spaces located in front of the building, and the additional parking spaces are located here to the, to the north and west of the building. Site circulation is such that people come in here, come into the parking lot, exit out here. Thus, most of the traffic comes up by the front door entry to the site. So shifting to sheet four, I believe it is. What we're looking at doing is utilizing the same location for the site entrance, changing the configuration of the parking in front of the building where the entrance is to the building, adding additional handicap parking spaces for a total of six handicap parking spaces, offloading areas for a van, and conventional handicap parking spaces with cuts into the walkway, and we're actually looking at taking the curb line that's currently at the face of that walkway and shifting it, creating a vegetated strip between them for bumper overhang, and to allow for some accessibility access up to the sidewalk that's in front of the building. Additionally, we've added some parking spaces here for those people that may have mobility issues to get closer to the front door. And then the main expansion of the parking lot is located here. We've actually left the existing parking lot, paved parking lot area here, and you can see we've turned it and made it more parallel and perpendicular, if you will, with Midway Branch, and expanded the parking. Additionally, we've provided for a pedestrian access way from the parking spaces through the parking lot and into that front walkway area. And as Rich had mentioned, the site circulation pattern will now be up through here, so it'll no longer be through the front door where the current walkway is to exit the parking lot, and then go through the crosswalk at the front door, thus pedestrian traffic and vehicle traffic are crossing. We tried to separate that out. Additionally, as mentioned, we've positioned the pavilion area here to the back northeast corner of the existing property, and that pavilion would be 24 feet in width by 44 feet in length. We have proposed some modifications to the site stormwater system. Majority of the area is being left as is. Small increases of pavement here and here will be directed to this proposed underground infiltration system. And we have provided for some capture of stormwater in this location here to offset the pavilion. That will be directed to that underground infiltration system as well. That's shown on sheet five. We have shown some proposed tree plantings around the site to comply with the bylaw of the town with regard to tree planting. We did have some discussions on that. We'll be adding a handful of more additional trees and not take credit for the existing trees around some of the parking spaces. So we're going to look at it as totally creating a compliant site for all of the parking spaces and not counting any of the existing trees. So to summarize the parking, we are going to have... We're going to have a parking count that has six handicap parking spaces and eighty-four conventional parking spaces around the site. So that'll be what the facility will have. We did have discussions with the building commissioner. He looked at some of the historical records with respect to calculation of parking space demand, and he came up with a number of 78 conventional spaces. So as I said, we have 84, so we're six over. One of those spaces is being allocated for a van that the Council on Aging has, that's stored there, my understanding, overnight. So we're basically about five parking spaces above the, above the demand. So that's an overview of the site, of the pavilion, of the parking, and the changes. And lastly, I'd just like to touch a little bit upon the site lighting. We had talked with a lighting consultant with respect to the site lighting, and as mentioned, site lighting has come a long way. We're looking at installing LED fixtures on some of the building-mounted locations and making some modifications to some of the pole locations to accommodate the new parking lot configuration, and to remove and reset poles at some of the original locations. You know, the photometric plan shows that there's basically very little light spillage around the site, very little, any light spillage to the easterly side of the existing building, with a small amount of light spillage at the intersection of the site driveway with Midway Branch. There is an existing light there, which is, as the board knows, typically what you would be asking for is for us to light an intersection and/or a cul-de-sac. So there is some light spillage there onto Midway Branch, but we think that's a benefit due to the intersection being there, people entering and exiting. So we do have a photometric plan. We did provide cut sheets with great detail as to what all the fixtures are that will be used out there. And that's a summary of the project. We're working two things with beta on the technical side, but we wanted to come in and give the board and the community a preview of the project. Happy to listen to and answer any questions the board or the neighbors may have.
All right. Before we go to beta for comment, does the board have any questions?
I do. So you, it shows on the locus that you're going to be adding to this existing parcel. But it doesn't look like you, you need as much as what you're adding, so why, why is there so much being added?
It's a lot coverage issue.
That's, okay, that's what I thought, but I wanted to hear that, yeah.
So with the proposed additional land, we're at, we're at a lot coverage of just under 24%, where 25% is allowed. So that was the reason for that size being chosen, built in a little bit of future expansion.
Okay. Staging, staging for construction, I know that that's not part of the plan sheets that you typically, typically draft up for something like this, but have you put any thought into, how would the contractor construct that? I know you're designing it, but, but what are the thoughts on that?
We actually have, we talked about relocating the facility while the parking lot works being done, because the plan is to repave the entirety of the site.
Right.
So could portions, you know, we haven't come up with a phasing plan, what the parking demand would be, could we use the shuttle and park people off-site during the construction? We haven't got into that finite a detail, we've discussed those as options, but the idea was, when the main paving and work is going on, to close the facility for safety reasons.
Okay. To, okay.
And also to allow for a shorter timeframe for which to be able to complete the project, because if it, if the facility's shut down, you're not having to...
Oh, yeah, staging, if you're, if you're staging the construction, that does dramatically lengthen the project. Okay.
Any other questions?
I have a question, which is about the parking lot in particular. Karen had mentioned that people are parking closer to the building because they, they just want to be closer, it's easier for them, and I'm curious if this parking lot that goes even farther away from the building is going to solve that problem? Or do you think they're parking closer because that's all gravel and it's not safe for them?
I think, I think it's both. It depends on the person, but yes. Some people are okay and can walk the further distance, and some people parking like they are because they can't. Is that, is that an answer to your question?
Yes.
All right, so I believe we have Steve from Beta?
Yes.
So Steve, if you can go ahead and walk us through your assessment?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephen Lee. I am with the Beta Group. We did a first pass at, here reviewing this design from a town regulation standpoint, took into account the, like, Chapter 156, Earth Removal, Stormwater Management, zoning bylaws, zoning maps, subdivision land, site plan approval regulations, and the stormwater handbook. So the peer review starts off with a list of the waivers that they're asking for, an impact study and assessments, they're asking for a waiver to not require that, a waiver for traffic congestion control and analysis, they're asking for a waiver to not provide that, they're asking for a waiver for sloped granite edgings to allow cave-caught berm, that was something that they had spoken with the Department of Public Works about. My understanding is that's fine. And another waiver regarding survey ties to the local state bound, that's being asked for, that's pretty standard, so those are the four waivers they're requesting. Our comments were pretty general. A lot of them had to do with the stormwater report, so a lot of them are, you know, in the weeds as far as how the calculations were done, some of the assumptions that were made as far as, you know, infiltration rates, stuff like that. There were a couple items on the peer review as far as a site visit. We went out to the site just to verify the conditions, make sure that their assumptions were correct. There were a couple minor things that we noted as far as, like, things that weren't showing up on the existing conditions plan. We've spoken with United about these items, and they're going to add them onto the plans. Moving forward in our review, the next section is regarding subdivision of land and site plan approval rules and regulations. These are, again, some minor things about providing the correct scale on their locus map, providing the existing dimensions of the building, of the storage shed, providing dimensions of the free standing sign, the location, size, and class of all the utilities on the plans. Again, this is just stuff in the existing conditions we like to see, so there isn't really any major design items. Earthwork calculations, again, to see if an earth removal permit is needed. General traffic comments, again, it was the idea of it's up to the planning board in the town whether or not a traffic impact analysis is warranted for the project. The next item was to make sure that the fire department has reviewed the proposed layout for emergency access. My understanding is that they have seen this, and they have provided comment as far as that goes. Providing the area and capacity of the existing structure to, to make sure that the parking requirements are accurate. I know there was a lot of talk of what, how it's being used now, you know, they, they have the items on Wednesday where they have the, the food or the luncheon, you know? So those items seem to be in line with the amount that they're providing, and then some dimensional, excuse me, annotations as far as the size of the parking lots, the driveways and aisles, these are, again, things in the plans that we wanted to see, not necessarily from a design standpoint, everything looked fine, but it's good to have those on the plans. A photometric plan has been provided that was on there at one point, but they have provided the photometric plan. Again, minor items in the utilities, one, our only comment was to provide the material of the proposed water service. Landscaping comments, we, we had to, they had spoken about the number of trees, we had already talked about this, about how they were accounting for existing trees, that, so the amount of trees that they were going to provide, and at the end of the day, that the applicant said that they would just add a few trees, I think it was four, that ended up being... We asked for information about this seed mix that they're going to use, just to make sure that it's appropriate. And then the majority of the remaining comments involve the stormwater management, again, so HydroCAD is the program that we use to analyze stormwater re- and post, making sure that the flows are reduced in all, all rain events, and a lot of it is, you know, how the calculations were done, infiltration rates, providing suspended solid removal calculations. But for the most part, the, the stormwater standards are being met. If you'd like, I can read through all of them.
No, that's fine.
There's 20, yeah, there's 26 of them. And again, they're, they're all pretty in the weeds as far as engineering goes, so I know whenever someone speaks about drainage for too long, it's always over, so...
As much as I love hearing about emergency overflow for subsurface infiltration systems, I think we'll spare the audience today. Anything else that stands out in this? I think everything else looks pretty standard.
Yes, yep.
So Mr. Gudrow, you've received a copy of this, you've started working on this. How much do you think is outstanding? And would we be able to see a revision of the plans to address these concerns by our next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
And we've got about 85% of the items addressed. We did have a meeting with, with Rich, A and Beta, which was very helpful to go through the items.
Okay.
So we're well on our way.
All right. And then so for us, talking about the waivers, so the impact study and assessments, waiver not to provide any impact studies and assessments under this section. Any concerns here?
I don't, I don't see a concern with that.
Traffic congestion control and analysis, waiver for that, not to provide traffic control analysis. I don't have any concerns. Anyone else?
I don't think the trips would justify that. I don't think you're going to hit your peak volume to even justify a traffic analysis.
Agreed. With regards to the WA3 waiver for the Cape Cod berm, our preference would be monolithic instead of Cape Cod. So that would be the only change I would make.
I have a question about that. It's, so either way, it would be sloped, whether it's monolithic or it's granite. But where exactly, is this going to be preventing cars from moving forward? Is it supposed to be for safety? Because my concern is whether it's Cape Cod berm or monolithic, it's a triangle and it's basically a ramp for liftoff versus a straight granite curb.
Very fair point, yeah.
Great point. It's always a concern of ours. So the site entrance has vertical granite curb, which will traverse up through and around the handicap parking to prevent someone from launching, which is exactly what would happen onto that walkway. Additionally, there are bollards with signposts for the handicap parking signs at the head of each of those parking spaces to prevent somebody from, if they climb the six inch vertical granite curb, from then getting onto the sidewalk. That's not the case now, but we put that into the design.
And now these bollards are the heavy duty ones?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. So the berm would take place in this area out here, if you will, so that the overshooting would be onto a landscape area where presumably no one would be walking.
Okay. Thank you.
And then the last one, pretty normal, so I think we're good there. Any other questions around Beta's analysis by the board?
Turnaround movements? Are there any concerns on turn around movements in the parking lot for fire safety?
I think when Chief commented, they were okay with that, right?
They were. We'll get a written response back to them. He's satisfied with it.
Okay. And I do like the way that we've designed the parking at the top. We have that nice big turnaround as well.
So in terms of just, just quick, so the process will be for the next meeting, they will provide, the United consultants will provide written responses to the comments that were raised ahead of the meeting for the board and the public. And then Beta will review those responses and then respond back in writing as well as on those, each issue that was addressed to say is satisfied or not satisfied too. So just for everyone in the room and at home.
Awesome. And so any other comments from the board before I open it up for public comment? All right. Reminder on the public comment, there's a lot of us here, a lot of us, I'm presuming, want to have a sharing of our opinions on the project. We're going to ask that you keep it to three minutes per person. If someone has already mentioned the comment that you've made, please choose not to speak again. If I do find that we're rehashing the same thing over and over again, I'm going to ask you to relinquish your time so that other people can speak. With that being said, I'd like to hear both positive and negative comments that are constructive on the project. Who would like to begin? Sir, please come to the mic, introduce yourself and your location. Name an address.
Can I sit right here? Is this mic on? Press that button, the green light.
You might not necessarily hear yourself.
It's just for cable.
Oh, it's for cable?
It's just for cable. It doesn't project.
Okay. Well, I'm going to sit here and refer to my paperwork. My name is Ron Burke.
You do have to hold, yeah.
Okay. My name is Ron Burke. I live at 31 Tucker Road. 31 Tucker is at the intersection of Midway Branch Tucker Road. It is a property to the east of the existing senior center. My backyard faces the back of the senior center. I've been living there for over 40 years, so before the senior center, during the last process, and 25 years or so since. So I think I have a pretty good handle on how the senior center, you know, impacts the neighborhood and me as an abutter, all right? In the first 20 years of the operation of the senior center, there were essentially no problems. There were some teething problems with lighting when it first opened up. We handled that with a lawyer and the Board of Selectmen. We got it resolved. For 20 years, there was no problem with the lighting. There's typically no problem with traffic or noise or anything like that.
I'm just going to caution you, you've got about two minutes left. We don't need the history if you can get to your point.
All right. My points would be the parking seems excessive. The town hall is a roughly 22,000 square foot building. It has 89 parking spots. The library is 23,000 square feet. It has 57 parking lots, parking spots. This building is 5,600 square feet and they're asking for 90 parking spots. So the numbers don't make sense from that perspective based on building size. The zoning bylaw says that the number of parking spots should be identified based on building size. There's also some metrics in the zoning bylaws that discuss minimum parking. The minimum parking based on square footage in this site would be 20 parking spots. If it was based upon occupancy as estimated back in 2000, it would be also roughly 20 parking spots. So a leap to 90 spots seems quite excessive. There seems to be valid points about access and things like that, but the quantity of parking spaces seems to be excessive. On the subject of lighting, we did not have the benefit, the abutters and the public did not have the benefit of a photometric diagram. And the lighting materials submitted as part of the initial package was basically meaningless. It was just cut sheets without product selections identified. So there's no way for me or anybody else in the public up to this point to assess the lighting system. The existing lighting system beginning in 2020 has been a problem. There was an so-called upgrade done by MassSafe. They put in brighter fixtures. They changed them from operating either on motion sensors or a time clock to operate based on photo sensors. So they were initially on all night. So during the entire, you know, COVID process, they were on all night. They were excessively bright. I measured the illumination. Normally a parking lot should be .25 to .5 foot candles. In this case, it was five foot candles in the roadway. So roughly 10 times what's required or what's recommended for a parking lot. So existing lighting is bad. It's on overnight. It was on at 9:30 last night. I took photos. I can submit photos if you would like. So the parking, the lighting has been a problem. We would urge if you're going to go forward with a new project that the lighting meet the Mass Energy Code, which is going to require you to shut it off when it's unoccupied, that you meet the lower illuminance numbers for a parking lot, not for, you know, excessive lighting. And that's also part of the settlement agreement, that, you know, we can have a separate argument or let lawyers have a separate argument about that.
Yeah. I'm going to let you know your time has expired. So if you have one last thing that you want to add.
Yeah. Final thing is the earth removal project in 2016. Roughly 200 by, I think, 46 foot area. It's roughly 11,000 square feet of the site was disturbed to remove 5,600 cubic yards of gravel. And that's now a flat gravel parking lot. There was no restoration work done on the slope to restore the trees. So it asks that the trees be, that were removed be restored in a caliper equivalent basis to restore that buffer on the west side.
Okay.
I think that's it if I'm out of time.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Yes, please. Name an address.
Sure. I'm Margot Tufts. I'm at 27.
If you can wait and speak into the microphone, please.
Okay. Is it on? Hello?
Yes.
I'm Margot Tufts. I live at 27 Midway Branch, so I'm across the street. Our house is up on a hill and sometimes I feel like I'm overlooking Patriots Place. The lighting has been a nightmare since 2020. I have talked to the Justin Casanova Davis, Mr. Hafner. We've tried everything. Lights are on in the middle of the day. Lights are on overnight. It is not consistent and I can't sit in my living room. It's horrible. This is a residential zone. I am a senior citizen. I'm 67 years old. I have nothing against the senior citizens. What I'm upset about is this town has not held itself accountable to the rules and regulations that they impose on themselves, whether it's in the special permit, whether, all the other documents. I have volumes of documents and it appears to me that they're able to bypass their own rules and legal agreements and do what they want. And I'm extremely frustrated, extremely frustrated. And I want it to be taken care of. The, when they cleared out the backlot, there was no, as far as I know, supposedly when changes are made, it's supposed to go back to the planning board in 2016 and 17 when they cleared out a huge area. We were never made aware of that. Did it ever go back to get approval from the planning board? Not that I'm aware of, not that I've been able to find out. So I'm disappointed. I've lived in this town for 38 years and I'm extremely disappointed how this has been handled. That's all I'll say.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. With the topic of lights, my area of concern is if you do have a parking lot like that and you do not light it at specific hours, it becomes a place for transient activities to occur. So that is an item of concern.
It hasn't for 25 years.
I'm just saying.
I asked, can I just make one more comment?
If you get the microphone.
Okay. The town administrator mentioned that to me and I asked him to contact the police and give me a listing of the, you know, what's happened over there. And there was nothing. Nothing has happened over there. If, you know, between that and the transfer station, whatever's happened is minimal. But the lights are not supposed to be on overnight and during the day.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Other comments? Separate from lights, separate from gravel. Yes, sir.
I have a quick question.
Hold on. We've got someone else who's coming up right now.
Good evening. Larry Cohen, 17 Barnstable Road. I'm also the chair of the COA Board and.
Just COA Council on Aging.
Council on Aging Board. So we're a voluntary group that helps Karen plan and do things in the town, for the town. Just want to say when the original, and I'll try to be brief, the original building was built, the number of seniors in the town were probably 5% of the town or something like that. It's 25%. There's over 3,000 people now that are in this town that have the right to come in, over 60 years old, and co- go activities. I think we got to think about, that number's going to continue to climb. I know I talked to Justin at one point and the number's going to be like 30% coming up in a few years. So I don't think we're asking for anything excessive. I think the request is to make it safe. I don't want a senior to trip. I don't want anybody to get hurt. And I, believe me, I've been down there cleaning off the bus and during a snowstorm and I watched the crews try to clean up and they do the best thing they can. Our town crews are doing a very nice job trying to clean up. Unfortunately, they cannot clean that back part of the lot with the jagged rocks. They can't get in close to some of the areas. We need to fix that. It's a safety issue, number one. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much and thank you for volunteering on the Council of Aging. We had a comment over here? Yes, please. Name an address.
Yeah. I just want to, here, I'll make sure it works. It's on. Yep, it's on. Yep.
So Jeffrey Thum, 58 Fruit Street. My only, my question is what is the overview of the budgetary considerations here? And where are we at with approvals? You know, what's the magnitude are we talking about?
That's not a topic for the planning board. Right? Yeah.
So thus far, just have to know, but thus far, there hasn't been taxpayer dollars spent towards this. There's been earmark grants that have provided to the town, for all the work associated with the project up to this point. My understanding, there's an additional earmark that we're cross our fingers to receive from the state for the construction of the parking lot. So your local tax dollar at the moment is zero. Your state tax dollar is equivalent of $40,000, $90,000 in total so far? I want to say it was 50 and 40, I think.
All right. Looks like we have one more comment. If, just grab the microphone. And then if there are no other comments after this, we are late for our 8:15 hearing appointment.
Jay Kenny, Hillcrest Village, 82 Hillcrest Village. In regards to the parking area, if we closed off the non-paved area of the parking lot, all of those cars would need to park on Midway Branch. So today, for example, we had almost 60 cars in that parking lot between 1:00 PM and 2:30 PM. That can create a safety issue for Midway Branch, traffic flow, et cetera. On Wednesdays, I'm also on the board for the Friends of the Elderly, which is responsible for providing the lunch on Wednesday afternoons. When we provide that lunch, we have up to 60 people, which can bring 50 to 60 cars in there. With that being the case, it gets pretty darn full in there. We're looking at that as a possible option. I don't think that's going to work with us parking on Midway Branch. So unfortunately, we're getting old and there's more people in this town getting old and we're going to keep growing and it's going to keep happening. And if we plan for the future, we won't have to in five years do this again and look at more growth. And we're overgrowing our senior center, we're overgrowing our parking lot, everything. So those kind of things I need, I think we need to consider. Right now, we do not have daily programs at the Council on Aging that run from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. There are some open hours in there, which when they get filled up and get more popular, we're going to have more traffic flow and more people parking there. So these are things to consider, I guess, when it comes to all of this, when we're going down the road for our future, for our senior citizens. And now that I am one, I'd like to see the quality of our life increased and not diminished. So that's the biggest issues that I see. I do have a question on the radius on that back turn, on that half moon. Will it accommodate a commercial bus? What we have is day trips that come out of the Council on Aging. Commercial buses are utilized for over 40 occupants when we go on a day trip. So we use one of the large Greyhound sized commercial buses. Like to know if the radius would accommodate something of that nature. Right now, the current configuration, the bus driver has to do about a 10-point turn, which is fun to watch. And then we're starting to include veterans in our senior center. We might have a veterans office in that someday for our veterans, which is going to increase even more. So there's just so much going on in this town and so much more that we can offer this town. So I think you guys, please consider all of this as our future endeavors occur. So thanks for your time.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Gudrow, you don't have to answer now. You can come back to our next meeting with a response to that if you'd like.
Thank you.
Awesome. If there are no other comments, we have one more and I'll say this is the last one.
My name is Nancy Murphy. I am an associate member on the COA, which Karen dragged me to begrudgingly, which I love. I just wanted to comment on, Mr. Burke, I believe it was you who made the comments about the parking area. The one thing that happens all the time is that there are more than one events going on at the, at the senior center. And I know for myself, I drive in to get to whatever I'm going to and people are still there because it hasn't, something hasn't finished. And the parking lot is a zoo. And the fact that you said that there were a lot of parking spots that they're looking for is because of that factor also. The other thing you said is that the library parking lot is, is smaller than what they're asking for. If you've ever been to the library, which I have because I run the Friends of the Library, it is a mess because there is never enough parking. So I kind of look at it and say, wow, we've really thought forward. We thought way ahead.
Right.
Just a comment.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much. All right. With that, I'm looking for a motion to continue our public hearing on the 28 Midway Branch Norfolk Senior Center until, that's it?
Can't do June 10th. You're not there.
No, we can't do June 10th. Well, we can do June, we can reschedule June 10th technically.
We can't because I have a public hearing scheduled.
Oh, okay. So.
So will we, so we'll provide some options.
So will we, so we'll provide some options?
Okay.
So the option be, continue to June 10th for now, and then look to, look to discuss later on, have an additional meeting in June, towards the end of June.
Okay.
We'll do 4:00 PM for us old people?
I would love that.
I would love that too.
Unfortunately, I don't stop working until about 6:00, 6:30.
Same here.
I appreciate it.
So we get to the latter part of the agenda in terms of new business, we'll talk about a second meeting in June?
Okay. So for now, are we going to motion to?
To June 10th.
The June 10th meeting at?
It would be first.
I have a 7:00.
So we'll take it at 7:00?
7:15.
7:15?
Yeah.
Okay. So the motion on the plate is continuing the 28 Midway Branch Norfolk Senior Center meeting until June 10th at 7:15.
So moved. Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So now we have our 8:15, 15 Rockwood Road.
Do you need me to stay on?
No, no. All right. We'll just give them a moment to clear out.
We do, like, dark sky compliance, is that the term for the regulations for lighting at night? I thought that was.
Yeah.
I think we do have to follow that, yeah.
So it's a requirement now?
Well, and the new lighting fixtures are so different with the downward lighting.
Yeah, I don't know what happened in 2020. I don't know what that was.
No. And what probably, what they probably did was they probably update, dated the light bulbs in the existing fixtures.
Yeah.
And, and they probably changed the, like, the halogen bulbs out to LED, and they are crazy bright.
Yeah.
Because I know they changed a streetlight on my street from halogen to LED, and it's, it's insane.
Yeah.
There is the.
All right. So if we can refrain from conversation as we move on in our agenda, we're already pretty late. If we can move conversations into the hallway, please?
The other two newer senior centers.
Thank you so much. Nice meeting you.
Like Franklin's is relatively, you know, and Millis on Ice House Road, they all have huge parking areas.
Yeah.
For the same reason there's so many over.
I'd rather more than less.
Yeah. Oh, well, it's a minimum requirement. That's the thing. They're exceeding the minimum requirement, but not by a ton. I mean, if, if the minimum requirement according to.
All right. As you all settle down, we're going to read the notice into the minutes.
Sure. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass. General Law Section 40A and the Norfolk Zoning Bylaws Section 310-6.11. A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, May 20th, 2025, at 8:15 PM in Room 124 at the Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass., regarding a site plan application and stormwater management permit for, for property located at 15 Rockwood Road in Norfolk, Massachusetts. The applicant, Charles River Equity Partners LLC of Medfield, Mass., is proposing construction of an eight-unit townhouse building and renovation of the existing building for three multifamily units, along with associated site improvements, including parking, landscaping utilities, and stormwater management facilities. The property is located in the B1 zoning district, reference Assessor's Map, 14 Block 39, Lot 13. The application and plans are available for public inspection on the Town of Norfolk website.
All right. Thank you, Dan. All right. Rich, you want to give us a little history on this?
Yes. So recall, prior to the board, well, actually, in the process of looking at adopting the MBTA zoning, which we started back in '23, I think it was, somewhere around there, and then went to town meeting in the spring of 2024, which was adopted as part of that analysis, looking at locations to, for the MBTA district. And at that time, Mr. Fry, who owns 15 Rockwood Road, attended some of the public meetings and had asked to be included in the MBTA overlay district, which the board agreed, which made sense. And so by that fact, the property now is in the MBTA overlay district. If you recall, way back when, there was conversations about actually taking down the existing building at 15 Rockwood Road and then building a brand-new residential development on the property. And through the process of meeting with the Norfolk Historic Commission, being located within the Rockwood Road Historic District, discussions was to see any way to at least preserve 15 Rockwood Road because it's historic.
Monitor.
One of the few remaining historic structures in Norfolk.
Yeah. And this was originally looked at as a possible location for Montessori School at one point.
At one point, Montessori School, yes. Daycare, once.
Consignment shop as well at one point. It was a consignment shop prior to this.
Guest.
Consignment shop, yes. Yes.
Guest of the network.
So what, before you tonight is our first MBTA project that's before you, which is to build eight townhome units, and then 15 Rockwood Road would be preserved and converted to three apartments. Right now, there's two apartments and commercial space, which is vacated, so. It has gone through a peer review process. Stephen is online with you. Applicant's team is here tonight, similar to the prior project overview of the project for the board. Stephen gave an overview with some of the outstanding items, public comment, and then come back to the board in terms of, you know, addressing those comments.
Awesome. And then while they're getting ready to do their presentation, can you just remind us some of the provisions of the MBTA overlay bylaw?
Sure. So in terms of provisions of the MBTA bylaw, it's, it's 18 units per acre by right. So essentially, you know, what that means is you, it's not deniable in terms of that use. It sits over top of the underlying zoning. In this case, it's residential, so it's not really going to make a difference per se. But for instance, if they want to do mixed use and some other use, they, they, they work together in tandem.
Correct. Parking as well, right?
And, yes, complying with the, you do have the ability to waive some provisions if issues come up in order to make sure the project is feasible to move forward. But parking applies, setbacks, et cetera. The one difference between the existing bylaws and the MBTA, the amount of affordable is 10%. Starting at 10 units or more, in this particular case, it's 11, so it'll be one affordable unit. The proposal is to have one of the units within the existing building, 15 Rockwood Road, serve as the affordable. The townhomes would be ownership.
All right. And then who do we have here with us today?
Jesse?
Yes. Jesse Aguilar, High Point Engineering. I am the site civil engineer, working on behalf of Charles River Equity Partners.
Nice to meet you. Stephen in person, finally.
Stephen Fry, Charles River Equity Partners. Great to be here. Thank you.
Awesome. All right. Are we, sorry, Michael Radner with Radner and Associates.
Harry Covart with VNY Architects.
Awesome. Perfect.
So tell me, did you?
Are you at a point where you can present?
I need to email this to you.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yeah, I'm having issues with my, with my Zoom login.
Okay.
So please just.
All right. Send it along. I'll look for the email and then I'll.
All right. Then I might bring Steve up to just kind of start going through your review. We can keep that in mind as we look at the drawings when they're ready.
Okay. Okay, great. Once again, Steve Lee, I performed the peer review for the project. Applicant is asking for two waivers for traffic congestion control and analysis. They're seeking a waiver to not provide that. And then they're also requesting a waiver to reduce the maneuvering lane widths from the required 24 feet to 22 feet. Once again, we've visited the site. There were a couple of minor things that were in the existing conditions plan, but there was nothing of note, just, just minor items, like a fence and a wall here or there. They, we had one in Article 5 for in, in Tensey Regulations. There's a thing about, in the subdivision rules and regs, about street trees in a traveled way. There's already a sidewalk in front, and they're going to request a waiver for the, the trees. Sorry, I should step back first and say that we provided High Point with our initial review. They have already sent us back a response, a draft response letter to which I am referring to now. We have not received the updated plans and drainage report because they were aware that we were going to be speaking at the first planning board hearing right here. So they thought that, you know, rather than sending plans back and forth multiple times. So they've already responded to our initial comments. They've been very open, and we've gone back and forth as far as what they need. So none of the items that I mentioned are, is anything major, and they've already addressed most of these items.
Okay.
As far as the size of the locust plant, stuff like that. The project does not need an earthwork permit. And some of the minor items with the stormwater management regulations, they've already revised.
Okay.
So again, I will not go into each one of those items.
Perfect.
If the planning board has any questions, I will be right here and I can answer them.
Nope. Thank you so much, Steve. Really appreciate it.
No problem.
Mr. Aguilar, where would you like us to start?
We got an echo. We have an echo.
Sorry, I'm used to using Teams.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Two.
It shows.
So, yeah. So this is, is a proposed multifamily residential development at 15 Rockwood Road in, in Norfolk. Stephen has gone over the waivers that we are requesting, namely the traffic study requirement and the reduction of the maneuvering lane from 24 feet to 22 feet wide, both due to the low-traffic nature of the development, and a means to minimize impervious services where possible. We're also requesting a waiver pursuant to Stephen's review of street trees along the frontage that is a requirement of the subdivision regulations under the auspices that this site doesn't constitute a subdivision. And we are also proposing to install high-density polyethylene in SDR 35 drainage pipes in lieu of Class IV RCP, as well as providing smaller diameter-than-12-inch pipes for the roof drainage system, which we support with a hydraulic analysis in the, the stormwater management report.
And so that runoff is going to go straight into that system?
Yes.
Okay.
So just to contextualize the site, this is the village at, this is the village at Norfolk. This is, this is Hillcrest. The MBTA commuter rail runs directly south of our site, which is highlighted in red. Norfolk Public Library is right here, and Town Hall is planned south. We are located in the Townhill-Ponville MBTA multifamily overlay district, as shown right here. The existing site, as was already described, has an existing historical building at the front of the site with, with associated parking. There is a barn off the, off the northwest wing of the building, and the remainder of the site is either sparsely wooded or lawn area. There is a, there is a stone-lined and concrete drainage swale that runs from west to east along the north edge of the property that is tributary to an 18-inch culvert, which flows underground across Rockwood Road and discharges off-site. So general overview of the site plan. We're maintaining the existing driveway curb cuts, both on the high side at the southeast corner of the site and the, and the lower side in elevation on the northeast, northeast side of the site. The existing building is going to remain and be internally renovated. We are contemplating potentially three units, two single bedroom and one three-bedroom. Currently, there is a, a small commercial space within the existing building. So holding the, the existing parking and driveway area as it is at the southeast corner of the site, we are going to continue the driveway from east to west along the south edge of the site adjacent to the MBTA right-of-way. And that driveway is going to feed outdoor surface parking and garage parking for eight-two unit, eight-two-bedroom townhouse units, all set at the same elevation. They will have walkout basements with patio spaces behind, and those patio spaces will drain into a, into a cobble channel, which will essentially replace the, the stone-lined swale that exists there today. We will tie into it on the downstream side, and that will convey runoff to the, to the culvert.
So.
Bless you.
Are those patios fenced in, or are they just concrete slab?
They are, they have, they have partition, partition screens on either side of them. They're open on the back end, but they are, they're unit paver surfaces.
Okay.
Hand-tight, sand swept.
So from like an egress perspective, if somebody had to exit through the patio out into the open for some sort of emergency, they would be able to?
They would have to, they would have to walk along the, the cobble channel in order to, to get out from behind the buildings.
Okay. Has the fire department looked at this yet?
They have. And I think you're, have you already addressed some of the comments about the radius?
Yes. So we have a, so we have a, a plan that is in progress, which, which I'll show you here. So this is, this is another version of the plan, the one that we're working on in response both to Stephen's comments as well as the fire department's comments. One of their comments was that, bless you, that the, the turning radii along the continuation of the driveway extending from the existing rear edge of pavement was too, was too windy, too circuitous, so.
Flip it back to the.
Yeah, so.
The other one.
Right.
So they can see.
So we're straightening that. And if you look at the original submittal, it looks like that. So we're essentially, we're essentially taking, taking the curb, curve largely out of it.
Softening.
To better, yeah, to better accommodate emergency vehicle access.
And then where's the nearest fire hydrant?
We are proposing a new fire hydrant off of the, off of that north curb radius right here, which is going to be fed from the existing water main in Rockwood Road.
Okay.
Fire chief was pleased with that location too, so.
Perfect. And then I believe Blair from the DPW has provided some comments as well with regards to the stormwater?
Yes. He had some concerns regarding the amount of, the amount, the amount of runoff that was getting to the 18-inch culvert at the northeast corner of the site. So, you know, when we do, typically when we do our stormwater analyses, we're analyzing for, you know, peak discharge rate to some analysis points for a variety of storm events. So where we're meeting or reducing the peak, those peak flows under the, like, post-development condition, we're either matching them or lowering them compared to what is getting to that point from our site under existing conditions. But we're also reducing the overall volume by virtue of providing a pretty robust onsite stormwater infiltration program.
And then it looks like a, a little bit of a rain gardens being proposed there as well?
There, there was. That was a, that was a shallow infiltration basin that Stephen had. That was a, that was a shallow infiltration basin that Stephen had commented on regarding the, the peak flood elevation of it being, despite, you know, being separated by an earthen berm from the building, was somewhat in conflict with the, with the basement finished floor. So what we've done in order to eliminate that basin, eliminate the need to maintain that as a basin and still meet the stormwater management requirements under the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook, is that we have this cobble, this cobble channel that we're using to capture patio runoff and capture surface runoff from the low side of this retaining wall that we're installing at the, the south, southwest portion of the site. We're extending that cobble channel around the building to capture that runoff and slow it down such that we're not, we're not exceeding the, the peak runoff rates that we need to, that we need to keep track of when, when considering the concerns regarding, from the DPW director regarding the amount of runoff that's getting to that culvert.
Jesse, will you just pull up the, the Radner's image of the, of the cobble runoff?
Oh, uh, yes.
Just so they can see what it...
I had that on...
On your site plan.
Yeah, on my plan.
You might have to move the, you just drag it, I think. Yeah, yeah. There you go. So that's, yeah, to answer your earlier question too about, you'll be able to walk out of the patio and walk down and out if there were ever a fire and you happen to be exiting the rear of the property, so.
And then based on location, I'm assuming town water?
Yes.
Yep. And then sewer?
Uh, sewer is, this site will be on septic. It is on, it is on septic currently. So, you can't really see it very well because it's, it's screened, you know, as an existing condition. The existing septic system, you know, comprises, I believe it's three 50-foot, you know, stone leaching trenches fed from a distribution box. In order to, in order to handle the existing building, the, you know, the units, including the new ones that are going to be in there, as well as the, the new, the new building, we're proposing two soil absorption systems, you know, with appropriate upstream septic tanks here and here and here that will, that will feed these systems. Just before the deadline, we did our, our onsite, you know, Title V soil evaluations and percolation tests. We confirmed that the soils are sand and gravelly sand and that seasonal high groundwater is, is lower than nine feet below grade. So these systems, which we were just showing, you know, as general concept in the initial, in the initial site plan approval submission, because we had not yet verified the seasonal That's, um, yeah, those are, this, this design has been advanced and refined since then and dimensionally it, it meets all of the Title V setback requirements and this is, of course, is subject to approval by the, by the Board of Health, but we have a, we have a conforming system as designed.
And where are your cleanouts going to be located?
Uh, the cleanouts for the...
The septic, yeah. Just from a traffic flow perspective?
Oh, the, the cleanouts will be, they'll be located in the pavement.
Okay.
So we'll have, we'll have that grade, you know, H20, H20 load compliant cleanout covers.
And then HOA and it'll be the responsibility of the HOA to schedule it and they'll have to let residents know that during this time to expect a van, but septic pumping truck to be there and plan accordingly and if they need to get in and out.
Yep.
Okay.
So, I did want to also touch on the, on the MBTA crossing as it pertains to, as it pertains to traffic concerns. We are, we are requesting the waiver for a traffic study and looking at the existing MBTA crossing in the context of our site program, there are controls in place to prevent queuing concerns at and near the site. We're not modifying the curb cuts into our site either and, you know, the, the proposed, the proposed site program is a, is a somewhat low traffic situation, given that it's eight multifamily units. So, you know, based on the controls already in place and what we intend to build here, you know, we, we respectfully opine that, that such a study isn't necessary. We are open to discussion about it, but that's our, that's our stance going into, going into this meeting. That said, I've touched on the high-level civil items that I wanted to discuss upfront with the board and in front of the public. So, I'd like to, I'd like to open, open the presentation to Eric Kavart of VMY Architects to discuss the, the building.
Okay. Is the green light on?
Yeah, it's just the cable. It doesn't conduct the lines.
Okay. Jesse did a pretty good overview. I'm just going to give a brief overview of the proposed townhouses. It's a single structure, eight-unit townhouse, two-story high with walkout basement level. Here on this plan, we have at the lower side, the basement floor plans. As you can see, they walk out, egress out the rear to the patio area. Each unit is a, has a one-car garage, two-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath. First floor plan on the, on the top here, you can see pretty much is south-facing. That's the entry level from the tracks on the next slide. The lower plan here, we have the second floor and the roof plan above. The bulk of the roof is a gable-style roof. There's a gable dormers, shed dormers, next slide. The great difference between the front of the building on the south side and the north side is about seven feet. We're going to have, on the right elevation, you can see in the center there, there's the sheds that are going to contain the sprinkler rooms and electrical rooms. All the materials for the building are going to be traditional residential lap siding, shingle siding. Roof is going to be asphalt, architectural shingles. And this is a rendering of the front elevation facing south. I'll hand this over to landscape architect.
Good evening. It's Michael Radner with Radner Design Associates at Three Allied Drive in Dedham. So, we have a few slides to show here and the first one is, shows some of the hardscape improvements and as was stated earlier, we have the concrete unit pavers in the patios for the residents. Also on the front of the building, there are some additional front entry treatments that are, have, have pavers as well. I'll point, I'd also like to point out that the current property line where we face the MBTA has a fence in a varying, various state of disrepair, I'll call it, and, which is mostly on the MBTA property. So we're putting up a new six-foot tall opaque stockade-style fence along that south edge right there to provide some, I don't want to say it's going to be really a lot of noise protection there, but a six-foot fence, but it does provide a visual buffer for, for the residents. And, go to the next slide, Jesse. So go, go one more and then we're going to go backwards. If you could go to the next one, which is, this is the front half of the site actually that fronts on Rockwood Roads. You can see the existing home there and we're really preserving all of the existing vegetation there. There's not a lot of change in what we're doing, not a lot of grading in this area. So what you see today is mostly going to be, it's going to look the same for the most part. There's a maple tree that's next to the, I think just to the right of that first handicap space at the island, yep, right there. There's another tree that is to the north that is, I think about 50% dead, which is going to have to come out, yeah, just, just to the left, yeah, right in there. But we're going to replace it with another tree in that location to the left. We are, by virtue of the existing maple and the two other trees that you see there, we're providing the required shading in the parking areas. We have, so we have three trees shading those parking areas. So now if you could go back to the previous slide, which is the back half of the site. And our landscape approach here is, we don't want a lot of grass. Grass is a lot to maintain. We have a lot of basically infill plantings of, and I'll say that we're probably 98% native plant materials there. I don't like to say 100% in case something comes onto the site that's, that needs to be a substitution or something. But we're basically all native palette and we're doing ornamental grasses and shrubs that are going to fill in very nicely here. It's a pretty robust landscape plan, but it's also meant to be a low-maintenance plan for the condo association. The, we talked about the vegetated swell a little bit with that image there. If you, okay, yeah, that lower-left image there, which is basically plantings interspersed with stone, which is going to help slow down and infiltrate the water and also provide some visual relief so we're not just having just hard stone in the back of, you know, people's patios and have a little, something better to look at. So the next slide, or two slides ahead, is the lighting plan and we're, want to keep it fairly residential. There's several eight-foot-tall traditional-style pole topped, pole-mounted fixtures there. The light all shines down. It's LED lighting, so it's very well controlled. And we also have, are proposing houseside shields so that we don't get light spill over onto any of the budding properties or in the, into the street. And we're not, we're not flooding the site with light. We don't, I don't feel like it's appropriate. We want to keep it fairly low. There's going to be building-mounted lights, I presume. Eric, you know, sconces at the front door and over the garage and so, so we just want to provide sort of a minimal amount of lighting for safety and comfort.
What lighting temperature are you going for?
Uh, 3,000.
Okay, so pretty warm.
Probably. It'll be 2,700 or 3,000. I'd like to keep it at that level.
It's pretty neutral.
Yeah, warm. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions around the, the trash and recycling area? I see that you have it down in the plan west, southwest corner of the drawing. It looks like two 10-yard?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And in front of the, there seemed to be kind of like a fence. Is that just enough to hide them or are they going to be seen over that?
Uh, no, they'll be, they'll be high enough to hide it.
Okay. And is that going to be chain link?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No, it's going to be...
It looked like a, is it articulating or is it sliding? Is it like a...
No, they're double, double swing.
Double swing, okay.
I think they're not, I don't think they're 10-yard. 10-yard would be huge. Those are probably like four yard, four yard each, yeah.
Yes, it's a 10-by-17 pad.
Okay.
So those...
Wood fence with double swing.
That area's got on a retaining wall, right?
Yes.
How high is the retaining wall?
Uh, highest, highest height is about six feet, but it's generally more like three or four feet.
So you'll see the top of the bends on the other side of the retaining wall?
I think, I think the pad's on top of the retaining wall and then it comes down.
Yeah, the pad is on the high side of the retaining wall.
Sorry.
This is, yeah, so the property line is low. The pavement is hot. It goes down.
So the exposed face faces, faces west and faces the MBTA.
And so the highest point is probably the northwest side of that retaining wall? Would that be fair to say?
Uh, yes.
So is there going to be a fence then on that wall? I mean, if it's six foot, you got to put a fence on it.
Yeah, there will be a fence. Yeah, you can't, hard to see on here, but, you know, there's a line, there's a, there's a fence line offset from the, from the high side of the wall that we're running a fence.
Okay. Go ahead.
100% of the stormwater from the houses goes into the culvert. And what's the topography, where's the rest of the runoff going that's on the, the drive? Nothing goes back to Sumner, Sumner Street?
Uh, no, nothing...
How is that controlled?
Nothing goes back to Sumner Street.
Is it just the topography that's channeling it in one direction?
Yes.
So the logo...
So the, so the, the north half, so essentially you split the building lengthwise. The north half of the roof goes directly into the channel. The south half of the roof enters roof drain header system and ties into underground storm tech infiltration system. So for the two and 10-year, 50% of the, of the roof and all of the pavement west of the existing, and after you develop it, the former existing edge of pavement here, is going to be infiltrated by way of this stone-embedded storm tech system.
It's not necessarily for us to figure out, but the combination of the storm system and the septic system does make me nervous with their proximity.
Right, but they are, they are separated.
Yeah, and it's not for us to opine on the, the septic system like that, anyway. One unit needs to be devoted to affordable housing. Do you have a unit in mind, just out of curiosity?
Yes, one of the units in the existing would be the affordable unit, yep.
Just a question for you. Normally when in a development, if a unit is affordable, the deed says it's affordable. Are we, is the historic house going to, the deed's changing on the historic house to say that it's affordable?
One of the units.
One of the units, yeah.
One of the units, yes.
So the deed will be modified to say that that remains affordable for all time to come on a historic house?
Yes, because it will be in perpetuity.
Wow, okay.
That is interesting.
Like in the old days.
Yeah.
So the house can't be changed because the affordable is linked to the property, to all the units. You can't eliminate the house, otherwise you wouldn't have your affordable unit anymore.
Um, yeah, no, I mean, yeah, it's keeping the building.
It's bound to the property now.
It's bound to the property.
It's always going to be affordable.
One, one of the units will be affordable, yeah. If, if we're, I suppose, I hypothesize if you wanted to change it down the road, you still would have to provide an affordable.
Somewhere or pay to get out of it.
Yeah, one or the other. But that will remain in perpetuity in terms of the affordable.
And then with regards to historical, it's historical from the perspective of like importance to the town, not unlike the registry. So there's no requirement to maintain it in a certain way?
Just important to the town from a historic perspective.
It's a local.
Okay, perfect.
Which Stephen could have decided he was going to tear it down and make more townhouses, but someone from, I believe, the Historic Commission reached out to you and he decided to leave the, the building that means a lot to so many people.
Appreciate that.
You guys? Thank you.
Do you want to, do you want to say anything?
When the chair allows us.
Okay.
I have so many questions. So do you guys want to, do you guys have any questions?
Any other questions? Member at large.
Thank you. Oh yeah, I'm no longer the clerk. Oh, yeah, I'm no longer the clerk. Unit, I believe it's unit one and unit eight shows on here that there are three bedrooms, but they're not, right? They're going to be two-bedroom?
That's right.
Okay.
Because I could not find the third bedroom? I'm sorry?
I couldn't find the third bedroom and I was wondering where it was hiding?
Yeah, it was a typo.
We, well, technically we explored doing the two-end units as three bedrooms and then all the middle units would be two bedrooms, but we have since gone back to two bedrooms for all eight, yep.
Okay. We, the last time we saw some version of this plan, when it was just, you know, a concept before you were moving forward and you just wanted some feedback, I can't remember where we said the snow is going. Do you guys remember where we're putting the snow?
Yeah. Jesse, do you want to talk about it?
Yeah, we're putting the snow essentially, so given that there aren't, you know, there aren't a lot of trees, you know, in the landscape behind the, you know, behind the previously existing, you know, parking area, we have the capability, given the landscape program and the spacing of the site lighting, to store snow along the south landscaped edge between the driveway and the MBTA right-of-way, as well as in the landscaped areas in front of the buildings and at the, you know, and at the, call it the northwest corner of the driveway. And to, you know, to somewhat more limited extent, this area here, so long as we don't obstruct, you know, the fire hydrant or, you know, cover the, you know, the castings for the septic tank.
In all fairness, when, if and when we do have another big storm, it will be tight for, for snow storage. They may, the homeowners association may have to elect a truck snow out of there.
Right. And that's written into the long-term operation and maintenance plan. That's, you know, one of the appendices of the, of the stormwater report.
Any other questions, please?
I tried to give him the heat to pavement, buddy.
It's a new building. Did you think I wasn't going to have any other questions?
Absolutely. That's why I want to make sure you get them all out.
Thank you. The back parking, so there's two spots, it's pretty tight, back of the building where there's currently, it's underneath, there's a garage door currently.
Existing, yes.
Thank you. Is there any space? I know, I believe there's like a little stormwater area behind there that goes under. Is there any space to possibly make some place for the people who, whoever's going to be parking there to kind of back up so they can enter Rockwood Road from the front instead of trying to back out into train traffic potentially? Just a little turnaround. It doesn't have to be that big. I think there's a lot of space, not a lot, but you know, enough space back there, but um-
Go to that one, yep.
I've tried to back out of there and it is not easy.
Maybe here? It's possible.
Yeah, it is. The driveway is, yeah, it's pretty steep right there. I know that this, this driveway kind of plummets down into a hole.
It does, it does.
It's a good way to put it. So just on the topic of that, there is a waiver on here for traffic control analysis. I'm leaning towards a yes on that waiver just because of the size of the project, but I do have concerns with regards to traffic in that location during high-traffic times, morning, afternoons for, from a commute perspective. Having, you know, the responsibility of taking my son to his music class early in the morning, I know that one train comes and that entire area is done for the next 15 to half an hour. And, you know, I don't know if it makes sense for you to restrict left-hand turns out of those driveways during those timeframes so that everybody's going with the flow of traffic towards the center of town and if they need to turn around to go ahead and do the full loop around, otherwise-
Cause you can sit around about.
Right. Otherwise they are going to be stuck trying to make that left-hand turn and making traffic for everyone coming down that road worse.
That's a good idea, actually.
Yeah, traffic is pretty bad when the trains, mostly because the Park Street Bridge is also closed, so we all have to funnel through that one area.
There is that stop line. This is, so this is in Rockwood Road looking planned south, so standing here, looking this way, stop here and flashing, that suggests that a, that a car would, you know, stop shy of the north edge of the curb cut, like right here.
In theory, you'd still be able to make that left-hand turn because there would be no cars piled up on the outbound side.
In theory, if you don't have someone just really trying to get to Dunkin' Donuts before their shift starts, you know. My concern is that someone's going to start pulling out and it's going to cause an issue with someone really wanting to go at that point in time.
Yeah. We can look at it, yeah.
Yeah. Just a, you know, comment, I'm not requiring anything by any means.
But you know, after living there for two weeks, you're already going to take a right out of there because it's so brutal to try to go left.
I think so as well. I think the guidance there as well is helpful.
Be cautious.
And again, I would only recommend it from like this hour to this hour and then this hour to that hour. I wouldn't say it's an all-day thing by any means. And I'd probably limit it to like when school is in, when school is in as well.
Yeah.
That's a lot to fit on a sign.
School time and train time are at the same time.
Right? But something to that effect, like-
Time-restricted turns in my neighborhood, you know. I live right down the street in Norwood.
Okay, yeah.
We have this, some of the same issues.
Anybody else have any concerns with regards to the traffic control analysis?
It's, it's challenging.
I feel like we need one from a town perspective, but I don't want to go this way for it based on the size of the project. I don't think that's fair.
I don't think you need a full-blown study, but I think would be what we did on Sharon Ave was, what, what would we call that? It wasn't a traffic, it was like a, it was like a light version.
Yeah, more or less like a summary analysis of what could be done.
Yeah.
I don't know what that term is about. For example, the end result was on this particular road, there was no, there's a, there's a divider, but there's no fog line, so there's no real delineation on the travel lane. So that was a recommendation to put in for directing traffic. So it was more things to help-
Traffic calming measures.
Traffic calming, safety measures that maybe could be introduced. It was more something like that, looking at such enhancements.
It's only eight units, though.
Right.
Like, there's not going to be that much coming out and you're going to learn pretty quickly.
There's 11, but-
Eight new, right? So it's not-
Eleven in total, yeah.
Not massively increasing traffic and if you're looking to purchase, you're going to know right away, like, okay, this is something I have to be aware of.
Right. I am particularly drawn to sites next to rain railroad tracks, so I have some experience with this. We have a site in Foxborough that has 50 apartment units and two commercial units right on Wall Street, 29 and 31 Wall Street. And it, with 50 units, there's never, the biggest piece of that traffic component is from the commercial use going to Joe's Butchers and, Butcher and Bay, the meat and seafood market there. So it's by no means the residents lining up at the same time going, trying to come and go. It's, it's the commercial aspect of it, but even that has not been a, an issue and we're, again, we, same exact scenario. Just happens to be a freight line, not a commuter rail, but same.
Previously, though, with the commercial unit on the first floor, I mean, there was a Reiki place there, a bunch of different businesses over time. I don't remember exactly how many parking spots you had, but it was basically made for that purpose, to have, you know, eight or so cars and the residents there, park there at the same time. So this isn't really that much different, except of course, whoever buys, is it, are they for sale or for rent or?
Yeah, the townhouses will be for sale. The existing historic property will, I think, remain as-
A hold property for you?
As three units that will be rentals, yeah.
So how does that work with the affordable housing if it's a rental? It's just an affordable rental?
It's an affordable rental, yep. It'll be a little bit more work on his part because they'll have to do, go through the annual certification process, but-
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
I suppose they could also be sold as condos now or, you know, or down the road, but-
Yeah, I mean, you could.
As long as you maintain-
As long as we get a rental, I mean, as long as we get affordable and doesn't, okay.
Yep. And then for the opaque fence, I'm hoping you don't mean chain link with like the woven stuff through it? No?
Nope.
It'll be nice looking. I mean, if you have a blockade fence around your-
It'll be wood or vinyl. It'll be, you know, a wood or vinyl. I'm leaning towards some wood-type look then.
Especially if you're looking to put snow up against any of that.
Yeah, something solid, yeah.
Yeah, good point. For the, I'm a little concerned about the back door being for ADA compliance, really, because if you have two, I'm kind of torn on this because if I lived there, I would want the borders on each side for privacy, but in, so in Norfolk, for people that are seniors, they don't, there's all multi-floor places for people to downsize to, so they, from what I've heard, they get the little chairs to go up and down the stairs because there are no single-family new places being built. So if that's who ends up buying one of these and then there's an issue of fire, whatever it may be, and they're trying to come out of the back, they can't go over the cobble, the little-
Yeah, just, I want to speak to this. There's no ADA requirement on the townhouses. There's no accessibility for that rear, for any townhouses in Massachusetts, so.
Yeah. I don't know, it still makes me nervous. I mean, you have to have an egress in the back, right, so that you can get out?
Yeah, so in, in the situation with the townhouses, it's kind of looked as being a, almost like a single-family dwelling. They're divided by a one-hour fire rating between each unit. So in a sense, when you egress out the back door onto the patio, you've already exited the building. You know, there's a screen fence that's along the, the pavers on the ground and then you can go around that.
Assuming that you can get around them.
But there's no need for any accessible, like path or paved or anything like that.
So I know that there is not a requirement, but I'm wondering, so there's a lack of housing in general around here for folks that want to stay in town to be able to downsize. So if they decide to go to a townhouse, which is what pretty much every senior around here has done, if they aren't in their colonial, this is where they're going to go. And they're going to age and then they can't get out if there's a fire except to stand out on their patio and just hope that the fire doesn't come to them. So that's what I'm concerned about.
So while we can require it, the ask is to take it into consideration.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then the design, the architecture, is that just a rendering? Is that, is that the color that it's going to be? Is that the final look and feel?
Do you want to, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, so I, I think we had a few different, a few different colors that we, we were looking at or whatever, and I think that Stefan had settled on this one, but I don't think we've, you know, fully discussed that, so.
Yeah, no, it's, so I, what I, my envision, I sort of envisioned trying to marry the historic with the new. So whether that's with color schemes or siding choices, I mean, the historic building is going to get recided. I'm going to try to recapture the old moldings that they have in one of the calendar pictures from a long time ago, because somewhere along the lines, those changed to more of like a scalloped situation, which that's not what it used to look like and it looks a lot better the old way, actually. But from a color scheme and a texture perspective, I want it to sort of marry them up in some shape or form. This was meant to be like, there's a really cool historic creamy color that somebody did a property in, in Medfield, actually. It's right on Main Street, it used to be the old Clark Tavern. I don't know if anybody's familiar with it.
Yeah.
Right on 109. And they redid it and it's, it's cedar shingles, which that has, you can't tell, but there's cedar shingles on there. And then it's that creamy historic beige color. And I really like it, so, but you have to see it in person because this does not do it any justice.
Okay, good.
That was the answer she was looking for.
All right.
Thank you.
Which way you're going to wait on the-
I could go into this all day, but I won't. So I think that's-
Monolithic color? I mean, are you, one color in the whole site?
Well, it's going to be natural cedar shingles, whether they're going to be like a light stain or whatever, dipped cedar shingles and then a clapboard of some kind, whether it's fiber cement or natural.
But the, the existing, the existing building and the new building will be roughly all the same kind of color?
Maybe, maybe not, because I actually want to sort of find out from them what it originally was. My guess is it was white and if it was, I was going to go white, but I don't know. Okay.
I know it's been several different colors.
It's not what it is now, I can tell you that much.
No, that's new. It used, it was white before that, but I don't know about historically.
All right, any other questions?
Oh, no, that's enough for now. I'm good, thank you.
Go to the designer, if you want, just that.
It's been sent to them, we haven't-
Waiting to hear back.
Oh, they're probably like, we've already reviewed the fire station, why they got any-
Oh, Gary.
It's just the red doors, it's all, I think this is cool.
Those are supposed to be like a natural wood, but that's not working. I like it, I think it works.
So the rendering is always hot.
It's fine, I'm just, it's a joke.
It's not, it's not a joke. He really thinks that. He's very critical. But if you, if you need any paint color ideas, just let me know.
There's this other waiver here with regards to the maneuvering lane widths. I'm assuming that's partially to assist with the straightening of the fire department's request a little bit and then just what's the other reason?
I think it has to do with the existing curb cut, doesn't it?
Yeah, okay.
It's, it's so we don't have to change the existing curb. I think it's 22 now and then the current zoning is for 24, but we were hoping to keep it the way it is.
Okay. All right, no concerns there for me. All right, opening up comments for the public. All right, if you could just grab a microphone, name and address and affiliation.
Could you sit and use this one?
Sure. Thank you, Donna.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Jerry Tasker. I live at 12 Mesconmet Avenue in Norfolk and I'm here on behalf of the Norfolk Historical Commission. We've worked with Stephen, Stefan on this since he applied for a demolition permit and we are thrilled that he has decided to save and protect a very historic property. And to answer your question, it is on the national register-
Oh, is it?
-as part of the Rockwood Road Historic District.
Oh, okay.
And it's actually the premier property in that district. So we're very happy that it's being renovated rather than demolished.
Yes.
And you have done a great job in answering several of the questions that I had mainly about any changes that you might be making to the architectural design of the existing building. So it just sounds like you want to refurbish the old exterior and retain its original color, whatever that is, we'll have to look that up.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to recapture as much of what it used to look like. I know it's gone through some changes, you know, it might be a window that wasn't there, you know, and stuff like that that I can't change because now it's a bedroom and whatnot, but yeah, that's, that's the goal, yep.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for your efforts. And we also, I also like how you've incorporated the peak design in your new townhouses.
Yeah, that was the reason for that, exactly. That's, Eric and I talked about that at length, yep.
Any other comments? Please.
Good evening. My name is Lindsay Anderson. I live at 1 Sumner Street and I'm sorry, I'm going to be a dissenting voice, sorry. So whilst I'm war for development in Norfolk and only moved here a few years ago into the village at Norfolk, my concern is twofold. One is very personal, that you are literally abutting my backyard with these and whilst most of the village are houses right on top of one another, ours is the only house which is not overlooked by everybody else. We specifically bought it for that reason and this is personal to me. I'm going to lose my view of the church, I'm going to lose my view of the town, I'm going to lose the beautiful big trees. I would argue that it is not a sparsely wooded area, that there are actually some very large, well-established trees and greenery there. Yes, it needs a tidy up, lots of the land does need a tidy up, but it is quite a lovely thing to look at when you're sitting in your backyard when my child is playing in the backyard. So that is personal and I understand that that carries less weight than my other concerns, which is, I did have the same traffic concerns that you do, but you've covered that. It's environmental. There, there is so much wildlife coming from that little spot of green land, so many birds, There is so much wildlife coming from that little spot of green land, so many birds, so many little critters, rabbits and groundhogs and all the things that you're not meant to have in your garden, but they're there and they're happy and they come in and out to us and we see them. And so many birds, so it will be really sad to lose that green space when we have so much open, unused, flat, concreted land within walking distance of the train station. To lose this little spot of green to me is a real shame and I just wanted that on the record.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other comments? All right, if not, I'm looking for a motion to continue the 15 Rockwood Road Public Hearing Two. Are we going to move this to the 10th as well? All right, June 10th at?
7:45?
7:45 PM.
So moved.
So it is on, it is actually on the 10th then?
Yeah, we're going to 10th. Yeah, we realize.
I had already scheduled a public hearing. So we've been advertised, we have to.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you. Really appreciate it. We'll see you on the 10th, 10th of June.
Thank you, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up next we have discuss the proposed amendments to the fee schedule. Rich, talk us through it. Do you have something in the drive folder for this?
Yes.
I see it now.
And I think I made you a card copy as well.
Thank you.
So the upshot of this is that we need to wait till July 1.
Make the change.
To make the change because we need to get into the next fiscal year so we can, our advertising budget get pretty chewed up for 2020, 24, 25.
This isn't, is this something that we have to put to town meeting as well?
No, not to town meeting. It just requires a public hearing. In addition to that, your fee schedule is in partly embedded into general code, which we're going to need to change as well concurrently with the change. So it's kind of a combination. But I do want to touch on a few things. So there was things that were mentioned in terms of the last fee schedule with modifications of site plan, defendant plans, preliminary plans. We did a little more digging and just thinking about it and that literally was if somebody was, like tonight, for example, when they come to you next meeting, that there was another assessment of a fee, filing fee and review fee on top of it. That's not been the practice. The practice is it's one filing fee and then the review fee is encapsulated into the whole entire review.
Meaning if we had to continue, it would still be covered.
Still be part of it, yeah.
Just another day, yeah.
Just another day. There are some instances where maybe there's too many that their estimated review fee, peer review, needs additional money towards it, that they might have to put more money in terms of it into the review account. But the way it's structured is a retainer system, so they put that deposit as in a retainer and then they have to be in 50% balance. So we would continue the practice, what we do today is that retainer goes in there, we send that scope, we send the project to the peer reviewer, they evaluate and they give us an estimate. So we have at least a good idea that we can provide the applicant, but we have the base money to feed it and then we can collect additional money as needed. So that being said, we would, we don't still have to make a fee change into our system. I can maintain the existing system and then eliminate some of those other ones that we don't really do in practice in terms of additional filing fees. But, so other than that, those are the principal changes to, from the last time when we went over the fees, but we need to wait because we need to.
And then who we're making things payable to, et cetera.
Correct.
Yep.
I'm actually glad we need to wait because I have a whole bunch of data that I haven't put into a spreadsheet yet.
I'm excited.
On fees?
What kind of data?
I didn't, I was curious if this was comparable to other towns, but it turns out towns are all over the place. And so I wanted to just break that apart and look at it and see.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I had already done that, so.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Well, we can compare notes, but they are all over the place. There is no uniformity to.
No, it was strange.
Probably has to do with their consulting arrangements and everything.
Yeah.
It is, we are a unique state. We all have our own little uniquenesses and fee schedule is part of it, as you can talk. But so anyway, we'll defer till after July 1.
Defer to Betsy's spreadsheet, I love that. For the info.
Get the spreadsheet, yes.
Okay, but this is the preliminary, preliminary language and thoughts on prices.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so up next we have 28 Long Meadow Road, discuss the potential violation of the stormwater management by law.
Yes, so let me get, make sure.
Be right back while you pull that up.
Sure, I'll get to. Look at, how am I going to get to my?
Hi.
My fire station joke wasn't too law of a blow, right?
No.
It's fine.
That's what it looked like.
When I reconfirmed that that was actually what you really did feel, because I knew it was true.
Yeah. I mean, they're saving the house, so.
They are saving the house, but the rest of it, if that was, it wasn't, so that in rendering software, so that's the wood, but you wouldn't know that.
Right.
Unless you use, but the colors.
You had to zoom in to see the wood pattern.
It was like a tiny green. But I know, I think I know the building he's talking about or the, in Medfield. That was really pretty, but we'll see.
It comes from like Town Street.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too, right?
Where they like moved the, got rid of the old building and then put the new houses behind it.
It used to be yellow, I think, yeah.
It is really nice.
I don't like it in this view. Isn't that, oh, here we go, okay.
Anyone happen to see the Concom meeting last night about 28 Long Meadow, aside from Gary?
Last night?
Oh.
Last week.
Last week.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yes.
No.
Yes, you did not, oh, okay.
Okay. Well, we'll talk about it right now.
Yeah, let's talk about it.
So here is, the subject property is 28 Long Meadow Road. Sure, you pop.
This is from August of last year.
That's August of last year. The property was sold and the new owner took possession in the end of September of 2024. As you can see in this arrow image, there's some activity here in terms of land disturbance from.
Do we know what they're trying to do there? Is there, like, what's the intent of this?
Not 100% clear on the intent.
It's a horse farm, right?
It is, it was, I think it still is, not 100% sure.
No, he has a horse business. I looked up the address earlier when I was watching the meeting, the Concom meeting and he does have a horse business there.
What kind of business? Does it say?
Not sure, but there's photos of horses and it's called something Horse Farm.
Okay. Well, some of the features of the previous horse farm are gone and, or started to go away in this photo. And this is April.
Wow.
So you can see what was the corrals over here are gone. There's been this clearing over here on the, on the property and that also is a wetland area, wetland buffer zone.
Yeah.
And potential vernal pool, certifiable vernal pool in that area, as well as some additional clearing on the backside of the property here. So I know the property is Chapter 61B, which is open space recreation. It's not, it's not 61, it's forestry and nor is it 61A as agricultural. Under the local stormwater bylaw, an acre more of disturbance triggers a stormwater management permit from the planning board.
Even with 61B?
Yep.
Okay.
So if you take these areas, which I marked off, there's, clearly seems to be over an acre of land area that's being cleared.
When you outline it like that, it looks like a six-year-old got a hold of an excavator and just went to town on the.
Hmm, it kind of looks like that, since some of the images, which is interesting.
You should see the trees.
Yeah.
But it's all recent. Isn't there some annual amount of soil you can disturb each year without asking for permits?
It's been exceeded. I did contact the Environmental Protection Agency on the National Discharge Elimination System. They're going to get back to me whether this is a violation of the federal permits from a construction activity level threshold. There are, there is activities which is then connected to waters of the United States. So there may be, there may need to be at that level. There is not an exemption under the stormwater bylaw, which I included in the share drive in terms of this type of activity. There is some things in terms of normal farming operations, but I think it's worth having, you know, send a letter to the property owner and have him appear before the planning board to discuss it further. The, I know they, currently there's a cease and desist by the Conservation Commission currently on the property. You know, I do encourage you to take a look at the conservation meeting, some photos I can share at the next meeting, but clearly there was damage done to trees that would seem as if somebody was, you know, a fairly experienced operator of construction equipment.
A six-year-old, I'm telling you.
Six-year-old.
They get keys to these things all the time.
I'm not an operator, that's, I could see myself probably doing that, but somebody who has, is in the business, I don't think would produce the same outcome.
But the pics you were showing were all recent, so it's all recent.
Yeah, so what you see right there, that's April 10th.
No, no, but so.
There's a progression.
How long ago wasn't it disturbed? That still looks disturbed.
Well, he just bought the house a few months ago.
That was October.
That's it, okay.
So August was.
Yeah, so.
August, October.
If I showed you, I can, actually if you, hold on a second, I can share my screen, so.
Picture on Google Maps doesn't look like any of those and I know they're usually old, but it does look cleared in that area.
Yeah, let me, what's the date stamp on that one?
Yeah, you can see the date stamp.
On the bottom right usually.
Bottom right.
Bottom right.
Are you looking at Google Earth?
Oh, no, just Google Maps of the town.
So here, so bottom left, actually, it should say something.
Just his imagery 2025.
2025. Okay, so that's from, that doesn't give you the year then.
So I'll go to the live, well, not live, but.
GIS.
I'll go to our near map.
Yeah, you can't do live, it's dark out. Come on, Rich.
Semi-line.
Doesn't look as bad.
How's that? No, that's not the right, darn it.
October.
No, that's not, hold on, please stand by.
So I guess my question is like, obviously the trees have come down, for sure, 100%.
Yeah.
But the other green, I don't know that we can definitively say that that isn't just grass that's died back and is now bare soil on its own because they chose not to water it.
All right, so let's talk about it right now, real quickly. So that's, that's near map, so I can show you October 24. Would you see the activity a little bit here?
Yeah.
Yep.
Not disputing that.
I get that, I think we're talking, are you talking about the, what's now on the right-hand side of the screen?
Yeah.
That's the picture of the.
That's August.
That's August?
Of 24.
So that's like, yeah, that's right after they purchased the property.
Maybe he was planting something, he turned the soil.
So this area here is greens.
Can you go from this to now? Like, trees definitely killed them.
You guys, you have to see.
Okay, there's right now, that's August, okay.
Now, now, now.
Ready for 25?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's.
Like even, so, yeah.
You can see the tire marks.
Oh, yeah. It's not just cutting trees.
It's not, and all the pine trees that are back there have marks in them, like you took an excavator and you went straight into it. And if you owned an excavating company, you wouldn't do that. And he does.
Hmm, that's weird.
Unless maybe you wanted a tree to die.
Yeah, so the, the general point is I think it's, it's, there is merit into sending a letter to him and invite him to appear before the board to discuss what's going on there in relation to the stormwater permanent bylaw.
And that exists alongside Concom cease and desist?
Okay, correct. And there is, there has been complaints in relation to the hours of operation general bylaw, which, you know, regulates hours like you do normally in a project in terms of, morning PM, weekends and so forth. And there has been complaints, that bylaw is enforced by the police department, so there has been complaint made to the police department. And there is additional complaint made this weekend, so those will continue on. So I think the takeaway is I think it's appropriate to send a letter to have him appear and discuss it because.
There's also one more potential, I don't know if the Eastern Box Turtle Habitat goes down this far, but that farm is right next to a farm that's in Fox Run. And I know that there's the HOA, the neighborhood HOA has an escrow for the Eastern Box Turtle Habitat, which is right next to that farm. So I don't know if it goes up that far, that might be too far, but it's certainly something to keep in mind.
So what I'll do is I'll prepare a letter and send it to you for review and then we can send it off and I guess the question, I know you'll be away on the 10th, I mean, is it, would you be all right if it's, if it appears on the 10th anyway, or?
I'm fine if it appears on the 10th and I can come in during that week to sign if needed.
Okay, all right.
I was originally going to be out of the country that week, but I'm going to be in the country, I'm just not going to be available that night for that meeting.
Okay, all right, so then I'll, I can prepare a letter and send it.
I'm going to be.
Nice.
You guys are wondering, I'm going to be in the country.
You'll be in the country on the 10th? Okay, good.
I should check my calendar, actually, while we're at it. Where am I?
I'm glad you'll be.
Will you be in the country?
Yeah, I'm in the country.
Good, you're going to need to run the meeting.
That's important, you, you have been out of the country, so it's important to know that you're in the country.
Yeah, that joke doesn't hit as hard when I've actually taken calls from other countries.
At one AM.
Exactly.
Yeah.
You know what, let's just move on.
All right.
It's true, you have done that.
I was just jealous of you, so.
Yeah, all right, so that, that covers that. We do have Avery Way was accepted at town meeting.
After fierce debate.
There was, well, there was a little bit of debate.
It was.
Yeah. I was there!
All right, well, you sound like, yeah, yes, there was fierce debate.
All right, so we'll endorse that before we leave.
You'll endorse that before you leave, yes.
All right, so town planner updates, Rich's soapbox, let's go.
All right, we'll go through the soapbox. Soapbox, wow, anyway, so we have the memorandum of recommendations from MAPC in terms of looking at the zoning for town center. I would like to go the next step with this was actually to prepare some zoning amendments for consideration for the November town meeting.
Okay.
You know, the high-level overview of the recommendations that, you know, there's not one thing, right?
Right.
Between the inclusionary and the amount of commercial, but when you layer them together, it does bring down the economic viability. And that is, in that chart that's there, that's the internal rate of return, the IRR.
IRR.
So, you know, 15% generally is the number where the benchmark you want to be, economically feasible. So it kind of shows, you know, what needs to be done. In addition to that, it does kind of represent that there needs to be some flexibility because each site has its own uniqueness in terms of financing sometimes. So proceed with potential bylaw changes.
So is MAPC coming back for a final review of that analysis and then?
That is it unless you had further.
Very deliberate.
I think this is, this piece is done.
Okay.
So we're closing the door, so.
So you'll take that information, you'll put together some drafts, we'll review it, we'll get something on the warrant.
From November.
Okay, perfect. Palmville Crossing.
Palmville Crossing, so I did, I was able to reach out to Palmville Crossing after town meeting and they, and actually had another conversation today that they are still very much interested in pursuing MBTA for the site. So I think I mentioned this before. One of the challenging pieces is trying to make the, the package wastewater treatment plant work, right? From a, from a capital cost and then operational costs.
Yep.
So there is a couple balls in motion, wheels, balls, however you want, for that. I need to have a little more discussion about those with some internally so I can come back to the June meeting and hopefully have a better update for you in terms of how to, some options.
Good.
So.
I like it.
We're still steering the right path. Shire Industrial Park, unfortunately have not acquired the property through the foreclosure process yet, so still in a holding pattern.
We're just on hold.
On hold.
What's so long tail? What are we waiting on?
To get the property itself, so because of property.
Like a paperwork thing or?
It's a land court. Yeah, it's a, yeah, land court, paper.
What's the next step after that?
So after that would be then to make the revisions to the design, which was, you know, just essentially dead ending, not dead ending, but you know.
Moving the.
Diving into the site and then revise the construction specifications according to that. And then seek some money.
Okay.
Yeah. That's the, that's the big, big piece.
How's the RFP going?
So the RFP responses are due on Thursday. We haven't had a lot, I will say, so I don't.
Did we send out?
We had five firms request. The RFP, nobody has submitted yet. I'm, that never, well, sometimes it happens ahead of time, but.
So we went from not a lot of responses to no responses very quickly.
No, no, what do you mean? Sorry, so I say.
You said we had no responses back yet.
We haven't, we had requests for the RFP.
Yeah.
So we have five requests.
Yes.
They're not due yet.
No responses due back because it's two days from now.
Right.
We'll get up there soon, so.
Okay.
I don't expect a lot of responses back, that's my point. Only five requests and so it might be a light lift in picking somebody. I guess that's the, the end result after this.
We only get one response.
If we, I don't know, but, but it's due, but it's two members. So who would, on the planning board, so if you remember, I do have two people from the Z B A that volunteered to go through the evaluation process and then make recommendations. There's two planning board members, okay?
What, what is this for again?
Review the RFP responses, generate any questions.
Peer review services.
Oh. Great.
I could do it, Terry, I've done a bunch of these before.
All right.
Perfect, look at you.
Awesome.
Day one, he's already.
All right, check the box. So once I get them, I'll, I'll forward them to you and then we'll convene.
Awesome.
Take care of that. I think we already took care of the schedule, we know the schedule, with the exception.
Now we have to talk about an additional meeting.
Yeah, so.
And we need to reschedule Veteran's Day. Day if we want to do that now or we can wait.
It's in six months.
That's a ways away.
All right, so let's wait on that one, but let's look at June.
Yeah.
I can do the 17th if we are sticking to Tuesday as the select board here on that day.
The select board happened to be there on the 17th. They've got a little bit of, they're going Monday, Tuesday, so they're on Monday, the 9th of June, then they're going to 17th, which is Tuesday.
I could do the 16th on Monday.
So I'm at a, I'm in a remote part of the country. I'm still in country that week.
But you're remote.
But I'm very remote, so I wouldn't really be able to participate in the meeting.
Are you near a border?
Yeah, sort of, yeah, yeah. Because we're a lot, and quite different time zone.
18th?
As well.
So what, when do you come back?
So that week is out.
That week is out.
Let's put it that way, that's the punchline. But the following week I'm back, which is the 23rd.
I won't be.
Uh oh. You're, you're.
Completely different time zone, completely different area, but technically in the United States.
All right.
Just not attached to it.
Technically, heard that part.
Technically, technically, uh, well.
A wee wee?
I guess we, yeah, I know, that's interesting.
What about later that week in the, the week of the 10th?
I, I think the rest of us gets to talk about who brings more to the table and which, which are we okay without? Because we get, that's, oh geez. I mean, in Rich's favor, he tends to have a lot of background information we need. In Chris's favor, he knows strange things about lighting and acoustics.
Noticed that tonight.
Electrical.
Does, yeah. So I don't know if two days buy you additional?
What's the driving force to have a second meeting? I'm just.
Well, to try and wrap it up before you're, say goodbye.
Okay.
That's, that's the.
Because we got, we got three, three public hearings on the 10th.
Yeah.
And you don't think we're going to wrap them up, so you want to have an extra meeting just in case?
I don't know, but I guess, do we feel like things could be wrapped up at the next meeting?
Can we make a decision on the 10th?
It could.
Be nice, but I see what you're saying, so it'd be nice to have a placeholder.
Yeah.
That we can just cancel out of. Exactly. I got you. I see where you're.
But he's not around though, he's.
No, I know, so the 24th doesn't, right, so the 7th, what, I think you were heading into the 12th. What about Thursday, the 12th?
No, I can do the 12th.
I don't know if two days buys anything though, or does it?
Does it buy that many?
We're saying have a meeting two days after.
Right.
A meeting.
And then the following week Rich is out.
How would that work though if you, if you continue a public hearing?
Yeah, two days later.
Two days later, would you have?
Yeah, I say it's a, I don't think we have it.
The only last thing would be the 30th of June. I don't know, are you around?
Oh, yeah, 30th of June, Monday.
I will be here. Yep. Wow, all right, so I think we're out.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we just have a very long meeting on the 10th.
All right.
Which Gary is leading.
Oh, God.
Yeah. I'm cool with it. So I think what we'll do, I think we'll get to the June 10th and we'll kind of have to decide. So we'll have a crossroad, maybe a crossroads. The crossroads would be if four of you aren't confident that you can approve it because there'll be unanimous vote that's needed because there'll only be four members.
Chris can make up the meeting on the 10th if he watches it and signs. And he can still vote on it, right?
That doesn't.
He can, he can miss one meeting and make it up?
Yeah.
Yeah, but when's it going to? If you continued it to July.
Right, I could, I could vote on it in July.
That's true. And then you're, yeah, six, one half and a dozen yellow, so to speak, right? Because if you're, if you're not prepared on the 10th, Chad would be here. Yeah, all right, it's got to be unanimous, I mean, that's the, the end result is, because even, it is what it is. It is what it is. All right, so.
So what are we doing?
Nothing.
All right, perfect.
Stay with the 10th.
10th.
Okay. All right, Eddie.
We could potentially wrap things up on the 10th, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
But are you available on the, like?
Have decisions.
You're not available on the 10th, but would you be available on the 12th?
If I needed to be, yes.
I mean, why not just change the meeting from the?
Because I've already, I've already got my public hearing for the sign.
Gotcha.
Already advertised.
Then we just continue until the 10th. Would you be able to, all right, let's postulate this, so if you were, I don't know if it's the right word now, but anyway.
What if you?
It's close enough. If you watched the video on the 10th.
Or the 11th.
And then we did the meeting on the 12th, you could watch and then vote on it two days later, I suppose.
Just, it's just a voting meeting.
Yeah, we could just do that, let's, we just convene for a vote.
We can do it by Zoom.
I mean, I'm fine with that.
And we just do the 12th by Zoom, yeah.
Yeah. All right, let's, let's figure it out when we get to 10th, closer there too. I think as we, that's a backup plan. We don't need to do anything right now.
I'll put it in the calendar just in case.
Yeah.